But first, we have our public speak-out portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'd like to invite those who have signed up in advance to address the council with some brief remarks. The first is Mary Elizabeth Bucy regarding housing. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Liz Bucy. I work at Arise for Social Justice here in Springfield, and I live at 67 Lindale Street in Forest Park. I was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about housing as an issue, and I just wanted to stop in tonight and tell you that in the last eighteen days, we've had fifty families come into our office for help, either homeless families or families with issues around bad housing, evictions, and all sorts of housing problems. I just wanted to let you know that so far, that's our count for the last nineteen days, was fifty families that were suffering with housing insecurity or no housing at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Gaby. Mr. Gaby?
Thank you. Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
And thank you for having this opportunity to speak. I'm here to support tonight the passage of the proposed amendment under your order number nineteen relative to amending the Chapter 418 as it relates to preservation of historically significant buildings. I attended a meeting of the Economic Development Committee on December 1st, and I was very pleased to see our council president had created a draft amendment which was, I thought, very progressive, particularly in that it put parity for projects that should either be demolished or restored, whereas so often, we've heard, "We can't fix it because the only money we have is for demolition." It just doesn't make sense. It makes no sense to me to be investing money that we have to pay back tearing down assets in which we then have nothing based, we have vacant lots that we have no revenue from to pay back those loans. So I thought that was very, very good. There were some issues brought up. You have on your agenda a revised amendment which addresses many of those issues, and I think it would be a great progress for the city if that passes. I think there are a couple of issues, and I'm going to pass around a letter which is to council president, which he has not yet seen because it's from today, suggesting several small amendments. If the process is such with all the other things on the table tonight that this can't be done, passage of the amendment would be a great boon. But if, for example, we could amend Section F -- I have this in red, highlighted for you -- amend Section F so that the non-city-owned properties, as well as city-owned properties, could also be offered inducements, or pardon me, people interested in fixing them could also be offered inducements through a receivership mechanism. That would be a great, great boon, as well as the other items that I've highlighted in red. So if it's our -- in addition to that, I've brought down a letter of support for the order from the president of Uptown Construction, who's trying to do training and education and feels it would be very important for training young construction workers if buildings could be repaired instead of being torn down because you can't learn anything from a vacant lot. So I'm done. Should I distribute the copies to the councilors?
Please, please. Okay. Clerk, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaby. Our next speaker is Bob McCarroll. Mr. McCarroll?
Hi. I'm Bob McCarroll. I live at 96 Elliott Street here in Springfield, and I'm here also in support of the amendment to protect historically significant buildings. You know, I sat on the Historical Commission for many years, and one of our frustrations was that although somehow city departments had access to money to demolish buildings, they had far less access to money to offer rehabilitation incentives. And it doesn't make sense to be tearing down buildings that might be able to be fixed. And this ordinance goes, to a degree, to level that playing field that incentives for rehabilitation will be offered before the demolition occurs. The only thing that I would really love to see is this to be expanded from not just tax-foreclosed city buildings, but buildings that the city has put into receivership. Because at the last subcommittee meeting, the staff was explaining that sometimes finding receivers for these distressed buildings was very difficult. And so, once again, if ultimately the city's going to tear down the building, the city ought to be offering the receiver an incentive that's equal to the demolition cost, because that might be enough to make the difference. But the ordinance is certainly an improvement over what we now have.
Thank you, Bob. Our final speaker is Michael Gideon.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Michael Gideon. I have some interests I want to speak out to the city of Springfield to keep them aware of the receivership program. Code enforcement of building department, they're taking properties on the false reports such as code violations, and they appointing receivers. The receiver gets in there and gives a rehab plan way past where it has to be done on the property. Now, they file a lien, a receiver's lien, for payment of what they say they spent on the property, which they didn't. They have no receipts to sum up the lien amount, the total, that they want to foreclose on, they asking for, and order to foreclose. The judge orders it. Okay. No way have they proven receipts to total the full amount that they are leaning for. Now, they get this order and auctions the property. And they get this house. They go to the registry of deeds and file a false ownership as the deed owner of the property. In no way have they proven by affidavit that they have spent that amount of money on the property. And that is something we need to take a look at, as far as the receivership program and the way it's passing through the judge, at least to De Souza, Judge Fine, Judge Field, and Judge Crampton from North Hampton. We need to take a good look at this receivership. Ninety percent of the lawyers are in on the receivership. You can't get one to represent you because of, like, conflict of interest, because they're receivers. We need to take a close look at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gideon. That will conclude our public speak-out portion of the meeting. Okay? Mr. Clerk, we're going to get started. So if you could please call the roll, we're going to call the meeting adjourned.
Counselor Hurst. Absent. Counselor Shea.
Present.
Present. Counselor Twiggs.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook.
Present.
Present. Counselor Bud Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Ash.
Here.
Counselor Edwards.
Absent.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Here. Counselor Fenton.
Present. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clerk. I have received communication from Counselor Hurst. Unfortunately, he has had a death, and his family is out of state to be there for the services. So we regret he cannot be here with us tonight. Will the clerk please recognize the councilors in seats number twelve -- excuse me, seven and eleven?
Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present.
Okay. Counselor Shea.
Mr. President, I'd like to move item number twenty-one to go into executive session.
Okay. There's no objection to that. Can take that matter first.
Item number twenty-one is a request for executive session from the city solicitor to communicate with the council regarding the litigation titled Willhite versus the City of Springfield.
Okay. Are there any motions? Counselor Shea.
I'll make a motion. We go into our executive session on master under laws for purposes of litigation, strategy, and personnel matters, and we will return to open session.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Shea, seconded by Counselor Twiggs. Mr. Clerk, roll call on that motion, please. This is a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation with the intent that we will return.
On the motion, Counselor Hurst, absent. Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Twiggs.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
No.
No. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gomez.
No.
No. Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton.
Yes. More than sufficient. Ladies and gentlemen, this body is in executive session. Please quietly and peacefully exit the chambers. We will discuss this matter with the solicitor, Attorney Davis, and Mr. Plant only.
Mr. President?
Counselor Rook. Why don't we do -- we'll have that as one of the first votes when we get into executive session.
Item number thirteen is an order ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with Ask Me 1596A, sponsored by the mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. Some good news to report. We have a tentative agreement with Ask Me Council 1596A, which represents the middle managers at the library and the library supervisors. We've had -- there are about fifty-one employees in that bargaining unit. The contract expired on June 30th, 2016. Bargaining commenced on March 7th, 2016. We've had seven bargaining sessions. The tentative agreement was reached on November 2nd, was ratified by the union on November 28th. This group includes children's librarians, reference librarians, branch supervisors, library associates, and a few other positions. We have in the first contract, a two percent increase retroactive to July 1, 2016, and then in the next, the three-year contract that follows that, increases of two percent, two percent, and two percent. And we've included some address code in this agreement. We've tightened up some of the promotion language, some of the sick leave language.
Okay. Residency?
It's already in there.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Just more comments, Fred. I just want to thank Mr. Mahoney for working hard for residency. I know sometimes we go at it in meetings on some various other departments, but they've done a pretty good job the last year in terms of getting residency in most of these contracts, librarians, nurses, custodians. I appreciate it. So keep the good work up. We'll keep fighting until we get 100 percent, but we're getting closer. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, roll calls required, please.
On ratifying the contract, Counselor Hurst. Absent. Counselor Shea.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Counselor Twiggs.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient. Contract is approved. Okay. Any reports of committee this evening?
Counselor Marcus Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have two reports of committee to report today. First, on the committee on Outer Affairs. We met with seniors at the Pine Point Senior Center last week to discuss the transition to a new senior center. A lot of angst, a lot of anticipation, and their senior center is closing December 31st due to the owner having other intended usage for the space. And I was delighted, joined by Commissioner Carlton, as well as Jan Diddy and other members of the directors of senior centers of the city, to announce that the seniors will be using the senior center in East Springfield instead of Pine Point. And I want to thank you, Mr. President, for your due diligence on that part as well. The seniors, it kind of makes me get a little choked up just kind of remembering my grandmother who used to frequent the center, but they were overjoyed over the fact that they all get the opportunity to stay together, they get the same services and programming, as well as hot lunches, too, daily, and the, you know, the same services as well as bingo and other things that they like to do together as one unit, and they will be able to continue to thrive together. So that's the first. The second being, today, we met, the young professional subcommittee met on the mobile food truck ordinance, and I am also happy to report that there was a lot of headway made in that meeting. The location for the mobile food trucks was decided. The general hours of operation in conjunction with the Springfield Police Department with their input was decided. The number of permits to be issued, or I guess the food truck vendors, where they can actually operate, there'll be six on Lyman Street, as well as six on Riverfront Park, and that's just something for the councilors to keep in the back of their minds as the due diligence continues to be put forth towards this. We also came to a conclusion about the cost of permitting fees, and also, we talked about other fees associated with having a mobile food truck, which will be necessary. We talked about the provision, of the sunset provision, which will also cause this body in one year from the execution of this ordinance to review the ordinance as a body to see if, you know, things are working, if things need to be fixed, if things need to be assessed in a different way. So it allows for that time to kind of resurrect this ordinance if need be. And we will be meeting within a month's time with Christopher Signoli, who will kind of develop the forms needed for food trucks to operate in terms of the permitting forms, and we're looking on the up and up for this. So I would say by February, March time, the mobile food truck ordinance will become before this body for a full vote. Thank you.
All those in favor of receiving the reports of committee, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Great work. Counselor Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic Development Subcommittee met on November 17th and on December 1st to discuss the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 418, preservation of historical significant buildings. During the meetings, we were joined by several councilors who asked various questions of different departments. Mr. President, during our meetings, we were able to meet with department heads. TJ Plant reported during the meeting that bond money cannot be used for the purpose of rehabilitation, because those monies were reserved specifically for demo. Tina Quagliato reported on the amount of properties that have been demolished in the city of Springfield and those that are on the list to be demolished. Kathy Bono reported on CDBG funds and what percentage of CDBG funds are eligible for blight. And Lisa De Souza from the Law Department presented on some of the concerns that they had with the legality and the language within the ordinance, which I believe has been addressed. We did not take a vote in committee, Mr. President, at that night. We did not have a quorum of the members that are members of that committee. And so, we did not take a vote, but I am prepared to move forward with this ordinance and bring it to the floor for a vote. I will personally be voting in favor of this ordinance, and I encourage my colleagues to vote, to do so as well. And I want to thank you and Counselor Bud Williams for your efforts, and also Bob McCarroll, who attended all of our meetings and provided some very valuable information to try to save some of our historical buildings in the city of Springfield. And I commend all of you for the work that you've done, Mr. President. And at the conclusion of my report, I'd like to bring that item out of order for a vote.
Okay. All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Is there any objection to taking item number -- what are we at here? Nineteen. Nineteen.
I had another report of committee.
Okay. Counselor Ramos is asked to do item number nineteen at this hour. Okay. So let's read that, Mr. Clerk. Item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen is an order amending Chapter 418, the preservation of historically significant buildings.
You want me to speak on it?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Person, soon to be President Ramos. Thank you for your due diligence and paying special attention to this issue and giving it the time that's so dearly needed. You know, Counselor Fenton and myself are co-sponsors. At this time, I'm going to ask the council president to explain the ins and outs of this particular ordinance. He is the -- you give your city your president or your lawyer hat, whichever one you'd like to have, Mr. President. I'd like for you to do your due diligence on it.
I'd be happy to do that.
I think it's that important, so people really understand what's going on. Not that I can't do it, but, you know, ma'am, you're more precise than I am. Hey, 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 hey. I take that back.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. So basically, this ordinance that we've drafted is an attempt to preserve historically significant properties. It allows the demo delay ordinance, which is currently exempted from city-owned properties, to apply to city-owned properties unless a few exclusions apply, a court order, and there's a couple of others. We've done this in consultation with Lisa De Souza and also in consultation with Tina Quagliato. They had made some amended recommendations and changes, which De Sheena, Attorney Davis, was kind enough to work with me on getting into this most recent draft. Basically, it subjects those properties to the demo delay ordinance, making it more difficult for the city itself to demolish historically significant buildings. And also, if we are going to demolish said buildings, it allows for, it actually requires that the city offer the cost of the demolition as incentive money to refurbish the property before it's demolished. So if we have a property, it otherwise qualifies for demo delay, and it's going to cost, you know, $50,000 to tear it down. Before we can tear it down, this requires that the $50,000 that it would cost to tear it down be offered to somebody who might be able to rehab it. If nobody comes forward that can do it for that price, then they can tear it down. That's what it does.
Thank you for that explanation. Are there any other questions? Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question, following up Mike's statement. You said that the, I guess, I work for HAP, and of course, I don't mean to bring the other, I know it's a conflict of interest, but, so if they decided to be, step up to the plate and be a developer, can they use that $50,000 to leverage additional funding, or is it just, it needs to take $50,000 to demo, or I guess rehab a property?
You would only be able to use it for that property. I guess, maybe I don't understand the question.
So I guess I'm saying is, I mean, if it costs $100,000 to rehab a property, can they use the $50,000, yes, with other committed funding to, I guess, yeah?
That's the goal. That it would help. Obviously, the cost of demolition is almost always cheaper than the cost of rehab, but if we allow the cost of demolition to be applied to rehab costs, and the developer can use that in conjunction with other sources of funding, it may become, you know, a proposal that makes sense at that point.
Counselor Shea, and then Counselor Bud Williams.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. My only question is, is there any emergency provision in here, say, a building gets damaged and it's an emergency situation to take it down? Is there a way to get around this, or do we have to still comply with this?
Yes, sir. And it reads, "Nothing in this chapter shall be needed to forbid the law department's ability to seek and enforce a court demolition order." They can do it that way. "Provided that the law department in the office of power provides a thorough permission of the building." The other way that it can be done is by determination of the building commissioner that the structure is.
So they would first have to get a court order.
It's either or. It's not both and. So if the building commissioner says this has to come down, then he gets to circumvent the whole thing.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
Counselor Bud Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Council President Fenton again, President Ramos, Dave Gaby, Bob McCarroll especially, Stephen Gray, Lisa De Souza, Tina, Kathy, Bono, all those folks that worked together on this. It was really, at some point in time, it got pretty tense in here, which is good. Tension usually drives stuff. But with your permission, Mr. President, I'd like to just read Jim Boone, who's a historical, lives in the historical district, who was really an expert in this area, along with Bob McCarroll and all the gentlemen. We all got a copy of this. I just want to read it for the record. It says, "I hope you will support the amendment to the demolition delay ordinance before you this evening. It is only logical to offer incentives to possible developers of serious deteriorated buildings that are at least equal to the cost of demolition. By saving these buildings, they stay on the tax rolls rather than becoming worthless vacant lots that degrade the value surrounding properties. These incentives, when offered in the past, have resulted in many properties again becoming assets in the community. Let's not waste money on demolition if those same dollars could be used for restoration and reuse. Seems only logical. Thank you for your consideration. It's a very important issue to change the demo ordinance." Jim Boone from the historical district in Springfield. I think we've done a lot of work. I think it goes a long way. Just one point, through the president, through the other ordinance maker, Counselor Fenton. What was brought up tonight at public speak-out was properties that have been in receivership, and I don't think we really dealt, it was brought up last meeting, that we didn't really deal with that. Now, we want to deal with that tonight, or pass this, and then come back and deal with it, and offer amendments to it? What would be your pleasure?
Well, so I had a conversation with Bob earlier today about this, and receivership properties are different from properties that are owned by the city. We don't have title in receivership properties. So what happens is, we take control of it because it's a nuisance. We put it in receivership and allow a third party to serve as receiver. Their work product, all their time and labor and expense gets filed as a lien on the property, and then when it's sold, the lien is paid to the receiver. So at no point in that dynamic does title change. So in that context, personally, I don't think it's appropriate to offer those kinds of incentives for receivers, because the city's never the beneficiary of that property. We never hold title to it. So I understand the concept. I think there's other ways that we can incentivize receivership properties to do it, but in this particular context, I don't think it's apples and oranges, really, in my opinion.
I think that, with that being said, pass this tonight, and then the next year, 2017, maybe deal with the properties that are in receivership that the city actually doesn't have any title to, but they go to court and they get a court order that goes to the receiver, and the receiver becomes the person that oversees the property.
That's right. And I would also just point out, Counselor Williams, that there were a few other components to it that were addressed to me by Mr. McCarroll, mainly regarding some of the timelines regarding 12 months to complete the project, and there was some uncertainty about what that language meant and whether 12 months was a long enough time period. That 12-month time period was recommended by Attorney De Souza and by Ms. Quagliato. So I'm inclined to go along with their recommendation on that. If it poses a problem in the future, we can always amend it to extend that timeline to maybe be 24 months, or to more clearly parse out that language. But after reviewing it and speaking with Mr. McCarroll on it, I recognize the concern, but I'm just excited to get it up and running, and if it's a problem, we can amend it in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Any other councilors? Seeing none. Councilors, I was informed that we took first step at a previous meeting, but because of the significant changes, we will have to take first step again tonight. We'll have to restart the process. And so, step one is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the ordinance as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Step one is approved. We will take step two and three at the next regular scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other reports of committee? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight before the meeting. We went over the financial, it was attended by Counselor Twiggs of the Finance Committee, also by yourself, and several members of the finance team. We approved all the items on the agenda tonight that were finance-related, and had a good discussion about the lease of the school department, the school department's proposed lease of the school department land for the East Forest Park Library. So basically, just reporting that we met tonight and approved all the items, financial items around the agenda.
Thank you.
All those in favor of receiving the report, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Edwards?
On December 6th, the REO Committee met, and the members of the committee in attendance were Counselor Allen, Pat Sullivan from the Parks and Buildings Department, Fiore Grecetti, a president of the AFL-CIO, and Ironworkers Union, as well as Rep. as well as representatives from local unions. It is the recommendation of that Committee that item number 18 be passed. And the language of the article, the item is such that its enforcement will begin at the conclusion of a study that will be funded conjungently, with the City of Springfield and representatives of local unions will fund a study that they believe will be able to stand up to any legal challenges regarding its enforcement. And in the meantime, we will continue with the meeting of the REO and attempt as best we can to enforce the requirements that residents, minorities and, minorities, minorities, residents and women are given equal and fair opportunities in the construction trades for municipal construction.
All those in favor of receiving the report of committee, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Any other reports of committee?
Oh, may I make a motion that we take that one as well? Number 18 out of order.
Okay. Item number 18, Mr. Clerk, please.
Item number 18 is the order of the name chapter 82, Article 5, coming over as a responsible employer's report. This is the most effective.
We've already taken first step, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on it? All those in favor of second step referral to committee on enrollment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk will take third step at the end of tonight's meeting. Okay. Yeah, we just took second step on 18, and we'll take third step at the end of the meeting. Mr. Clerk, items 2 through 9 are currently in the Maintenance and Development Committee, and the chairperson wishes for them to remain there. Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry about that. I seem to have overlooked item number 1. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So item number 1. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have in front of you the November revenue expenditure report. We've gone through five months of the fiscal year, and the revenues and expenditures are consistent with prior fiscal years.
Okay. All those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10. Mr. Clerk? Item number 10, please. Good evening.
Good evening. The senior aid program, we had had a grant just from July to December because the contract had gone out to bid. The federal government has awarded it to our contractor, Senior Service America, and that's why I'm here before you for the rest of this fiscal year, from January to June.
Okay. All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 11, Mr. Clerk? All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 12. All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 14.
I don't think the commission thinks a big vote because it's overriding the veto.
Okay. Good evening, Attorney Breck.
Good evening, counselors. Molly Fogarty is also here from the Library Department. Counselors have questions? Do you want to explain about the grant?
Sure.
Okay.
I just thought I'd give you a little quick background, may answer some of your questions that you may have. We have been working on this grant application, starting with a planning and design grant in March of 2014 that was approved by the City Council. And at that point, we worked on a building program that was based on community input and met all the criteria from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. We hired an architect in May of 2015, and he's been working with the community, with our Finance Department, with capital assets, to, first of all, to the site selection, which was the most important part. Where are we building this library? We had lots of meetings in the community. We looked at about nine different sites in East Forest Park, and the Mary Dryden School Site was selected. It was approved by the School Committee in November of 2015. And we then went to work on preliminary schematic designs and have been meeting with the community since then. Right now, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners announced a grant round for fiscal '17 for public library constructions. And this is not something that happens every year. The last time there was a grant round was 2010. So we're in a, you know, we've done all the preliminary work and we're applying for the grant. It's due January 26th, 2017. And one of the first steps that's required is that the land, the lease, be transferred from the School Department to the Library Department because it's municipally owned, and we thought we didn't have to do this, but we do. So the School Committee, the School Building Maintenance Committee met last Thursday. They approved it, it was approved by the School Committee, and now we're here before you tonight to approve the transfer.
All right. Any questions? Counselor Williams?
No, just a more of a statement. Thanks, Molly, for coming down. Mr. President, this has been an issue for a long time in East Forest Park. I've only been living near it a short period of time, but it's always on the agenda.
Well, because I voted against the first place.
And when I walked, my candidacy for state representative, this was on the minds of people. And it wasn't just, I want to thank Counselor Allen, going back to 2014, we started working on this, there are other sites. South French Parkway was a site, Tim, I believe, and Nathan Bill was at some sites. But the people voted us, never forget. Counselor Bill Foley, who did a national out, we had the ballot box that night, and, two years ago, maybe three years ago, and the folks overwhelmingly wanted Mary Dryden School. It just makes good sense. Now, this has been going on for a long time in East Forest Park. And it's not just the fact that it's a library, Mr. President. When you think about East Forest Park, with all the amenities that we have over there, we don't have a community room. I'm the chairperson of the Ward 7 Democratic Committee, and Tim Rook, and Tommy Ash, and we meet at McDonald's. Not like your ward, Mr. President, where you have all these facilities you could go to and meet. And the neighborhood council, we have to go to Holy, Holy Name, Holy Cross, I'm sorry, Holy Cross to meet. It'll be a community center there, it'll be a library, it's a well-deserved situation for East Forest Park. I really mean that. And every time something, East Forest Park, me and you have that eye-to-eye kind of contact. But this will go a long way, and Molly, I want to thank you for your hard work and your due diligence. But, Mr. President, this has to be in Boston by January 26th, I believe. Hopefully, that is in my state rep district. I plan to work very hard on this to see if we can get this project done along with Eric Lesser and Jim Welch, the senators, and Angelo Pupolo, and Tom Ash, and Tim Allen, and also Tim Rook and Justin Hurst. Because people really, they've been waiting a while for it. And the last time, I'll close with this, Mike Albano gave us a storefront. That was a start. It had no library until he gave us a storefront, and that's been, since Albano was mayor. That storefront is still there, where the Nathan Bill is, that's where the storefront library is. But the folks of East Forest Park deserve, they don't ask for very much, Mr. President. They really don't. So hopefully, this body will vote for this, and Molly can go on and start working on that grant. So thank you.
Don't forget, they closed that storefront for a period of time until we saved it with the trash fee and Counselor Allen, so. Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President. I want to thank Counsel Williams for his comments, and I want to echo his comments. This project's been going on two or three years, and it's been a nice partnership between Molly and the City Hall people with the neighborhood. It's something very much desired by the neighborhood. And also is, if not the busiest library, one of the top two or three busy libraries, a top tier. So it gets an awful lot of activity, and it's, it will get even more activity if we see fit to get this grant and fund it eventually, to have a nice new library there. So thank you for your work on it, and we'll just keep going on it. Thanks.
Okay. All right, Mr. Clerk, roll call is required.
On approving the order, Counselor Hurst. Absent. Counselor Shea?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Twigs. Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook. Yes, Counselor Bud Williams. Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash. Yes, Counselor Edwards. Yes, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes. More insufficient, order is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Twigs? Item 20. Okay. It's the veto override, Mr. Clerk?
Item number 20 is the vote to override the mayor's veto of the City Council's order amending Chapter 67 and 16, the Police Commissioner and Board of Police Commissioners.
Okay. Any counselors? Are we ready for a vote? Counselor Shea?
Can I just ask the clerk to clarify what a yes and a no vote, how that works?
A yes vote is to override the mayor's veto and enact the ordinance, and a no vote is not to override the mayor's veto and allow the ordinance to live out. If the ordinance is vetoed, then it will go through the normal steps of enactment and be including the city's ordinances, and barring some other action. It would take place 20 days from the date of passage, which would be tonight.
Yeah, the effective clause doesn't go until the end of Commissioner Barbieri's contract. But it would be the law 20 days from the day that the veto override was approved. Okay? All right. Counselor Ash?
Mr. President, I apologize that two Mondays ago I was unable to attend. I know we had a long conversation regarding, so I won't bore you with the same arguments that I'm sure we had. But I wanted to assure the council, they came up, my absence. But I called the President and asked him to delay the vote on this item, and he was unable to do so. So I wanted to be clear that I certainly wasn't making myself not available for the vote. It's an important one, and I just wanted to go over maybe a couple of really quick items, I think, that are important to note. That my opposition to the Police Commission goes back many, many years, certainly with Counselor Twigs in 2009, I think, we first started, we started the discussion around a Police Commission. And I remain very focused on a couple of items. Really, I think that the most important ones being that the hiring and the firing, the transfer and the promotions of officers ought to be in the hands of those most able and capable of doing so. And that without question is police professionals, namely Police Commissioner at the time, at this time. I think that's really important. And I think some of us who have been around longer have seen the, in, you know, in history, how the Police Commission, as it was established then, how it worked. And the idea that it's going to be less political to return to that is bizarre to me because I've seen how that works and the level of politics that play into that, and people getting phone calls and transfers being made and promotions being made, that really, looking back, had no right being done. And so the trend nationally is obvious to me that we're going away from that. We're putting that, those responsibilities in the hands of those most capable of doing that, which are police professionals. So I wanted to, just to touch on that a little bit. I also would draw a comparison to the School Committee. In 1993, the legislature saw a fit to change the way that school departments run. And Ed Reform took that responsibility away from the elected officials and put it solely in the hands of those who are most capable of doing that. The school superintendents now are in charge of the hiring and firing and putting a staff in place. And I think that's done for a reason because he's most capable of doing that. And I think that's a good comparison. And lastly, I would just say that the snarky answer would be, you know, to do what we're looking to do tonight would be, well, if you don't like it, then run for mayor. And I don't mean that in a snarky way, I mean it in a real way. I think there's probably people in this room, one or two or three or maybe more, that someday will serve as mayor. And I think that that would be great because there's some talented folks in this chamber. But if you're going to be held to, to be accountable for the actions of all department heads, then you ought to have authority over those department heads if you don't like the way things are being run. I think that's what we're talking about. We're talking about a charter change. And so I think that's a completely different discussion and one that may be warranted and merited, and maybe we should have that conversation. But to go back to what we know was a failed policy, to go back to that old Police Commission, I think is a great mistake. And so I hope we consider that, hopefully, it's not too late to consider that because I think it's an important decision that this council's going to make.
Okay. Counselor Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe wholeheartedly, in our Police Department, I believe wholeheartedly that, like my colleague Counselor Ash has stated, that we do have talented people here on this chamber that might, may be our mayor. But the fact of the matter is that I believe that regardless that this ordinance lets the mayor appoint his professionals to this position. It gives him the power, doesn't it, gives us the power to appoint them? I know it gives us the power to accept or deny. But I believe whoever the mayor is at that time would make a just decision at the end of this contract and appoint a body that is going to represent the people. It's a difficult decision, it is. And we all know that because we've been fighting on an organizational level, on a grassroots level, on a council level, to see something this historic come back. And all of you have great, great things to add that, you know, that this board was stated that was political. But I feel that from what we know in the past, I think the body that has been put together now can really adjust and really make this board work. I think that if something was to happen and we can mend some things in the process in the next three years, that's what it will take in effect. But I believe that, you know, we, if this was something that I felt on a personal level, then I'd be for this the whole way, and I'm still going to be on it, and I'm going to support this because it's not a personal thing for me, it's what my constituents are asking for. If this was something else, that if we were having our personal agendas, which I think most of us aren't, I would think that I've spoken to people that live in your individual wards that have voted for each and every one of you guys because it's not like we don't talk to everybody. People start talking to all of us regardless if they voted for me or not because, you know, I'm from a small neighborhood that in the end, you know, the neighborhood that I'm from, we don't have that many representation at the top. Fact of the matter is, I think that, you know, knowingly, the demographic of this city, when you look at our administration, when you look at any of the departments, a lot of them don't look like me or you, and you know exactly who I'm talking to. If we're going to be on the situation of when it comes to being fair, we need to implement this commission. We can't go backwards, we can only go forward. The past is the past. For us to continue, if we went to the past, you know, I want to say thank you to President Fenton to making it aware to that publication that was sent out, that was sent out before we had our mayor. He was for this. And I understand that he has stated that he has a change of heart. And I am wholeheartedly respect the mayor, and I understand his position. But when it comes to my constituents and your constituents, that's who you have to respond to. You don't have to respond to anybody else because all of us here are our own, the only ones that will come for us is our voters. But in the end, I am confident enough that even if this was to not pass, that if we were to put this on a referendum, that we would see that our city would vote for this. And I would hate for And I would hate for this to be on a referendum, when somebody wants to run for mayor on that same time and that same year, and see exactly what will happen to that person. So make the decision now, let's get this over and done with. We've already made harsh decisions already, we've already overridden some things, we've done some historic stuff, this body is not going to stop doing some historic stuff. So today, let's get it done, let's get it in, and let's worry about 2017.
Counsel Williams?
Counsel Gomez raises several valid points, one being the mayor is going to be able to appoint his police commissioner and the commission, okay? And no one has, Mr. President, and we've talked about this, no one has made me understand that this was an ordinance on the books in your government, Plan A, years ago. The control board comes in, they circumvent the powers of the city council, school committee, they start making decisions. They passed this with an ordinance. How is that serving the mayor's power? They passed it with ordinance. So if it was a good ordinance years ago, what makes it not a good ordinance now? I still can't understand that.
Me either.
For the life of me. It's an ordinance, a simple ordinance, that this body has the power and the ability to pass ordinances, the control. Governor Romney's control board came in, they had the power of the city council and the power of the school committee. They did everything by ordinance, they eliminated that auditor. We used to have an auditor used to sit right there, and the auditor reported to the city council, not to the mayor. That was your auditor. You can take that auditor and put him back in so he report to you. Those eyes were for you, so you'd have an independent eye. I mean, TJ does a great job, when you got the auditor and you have the financial person all under the mayor, where are your independent? That's something the control board, I'm just letting you know. So, Mr. President, I don't see anything wrong with this. This body has, under Plan A, has a right to have ordinances, and as this Mr. Clerk said, it will, twenty days it's enacted, and it doesn't go into effect until 2018. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Mr. Clerk. Counsel Twigs?
Mr. President, I had spoken on this matter so often. Ordinance. I don't need to speak on it much longer. I think Counsel Ash and I have agreed to disagree. He thinks it's useless for us to go this route, and he think one person can run the department better than five or six, how many else we decide should be on that commission. And I disagree. I think, I think five people heading up an agency is better off running that agency. So we agree to disagree. The fact of the matter is, as I came on this council, people were beating me up when I first came on this council about this whole question, about the need to have a commission. Now, we know that the mayor played politics when they got rid of Paul O'Meara and hired that slick boy there from Boston to come in here. You know, that was a done deal. And he came in and he changed the whole system here to fit him, not to fit the city. He don't know nothing about our city. Changed everything. The man didn't say a thing, except when he was running for mayor that year, he said he got to go. We got to have the police commissioner. Mission. This is not right. And when he became mayor, he forgot it. But we haven't forgotten it, because it's in the record. The record showed that he ran for, he ran for mayor on that question. And so the question before us tonight is, just show them. Let's just go ahead and pass this without a lot of hoopla. I don't want to hurt my friends' feelings. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't want to hurt my friends' feelings, let's just go and pass it. Ten of us agree. So, I mean, we don't have to keep going around the mulberry bush. I'm not suggesting that there's one in here, but let's just go and vote this thing and feel good about ourselves when we go home today.
All right. Okay, seeing no other counselors, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. Please explain the vote again to the council before we do it.
On vetoing the, on overriding, on overriding the mayor's veto, a yes vote will override the veto and enact the ordinance, a no vote will not override the veto, and the ordinance will not go into effect. Counsel Hurst, absent. Counsel Shay?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
No.
No, Counsel Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
No.
No, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes. Counsel Shay? Mr. Clerk, if you could please reflect that for Counsel Shay as a no.
Objection.
There's no, you can't, you can't. Can't object to that. So Counsel Shay will be recorded as a no.
Counsel Shay is recorded as a no. That is nine yeses to four noes.
Okay, so the veto override is approved. This law will go into effect twenty days from today.
It's going to affect in twenty days.
Okay. Item number fifteen, Mr. Clerk.
Item number fifteen is an order to transfer, to do a budgetary transfer within the department, the law department, in the amount of $28,700.
Okay. Counselors, have any questions about this transfer? It's $28,000 within departments, not new money.
What is it for?
Okay. TJ, if you could, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. This transfer is to transfer funds from salaries and wages to OTPS for the law department. It's just to fund some of their outside experts, some of their attorneys that they need to bring in for special cases. They have a couple of vacancies in the account now that pay for this, but it's also making sure that, having the need to cover the case load.
Any questions on the order? Okay. Mr., all those in favor, suspension rule nineteen, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
On approving the transfer, Counsel Hurst, absent. Counsel Shay? Yes. Counsel Twigs? Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook? Yes, Counsel Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Matter is approved. Item number sixteen?
Item number sixteen is an order to approve the Island Pond Agreement.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Signoli.
Good evening, counselors. As most of you know, the city will be reconstructing the intersection of Island Pond Road, Roosevelt and Alden Street, beginning in the spring, excuse me, through the Mass Department of Transportation. Prior to beginning any project, they send us a traffic control agreement, which basically ties the city into the improvements that are being done, that in the end, we will be accepting them for maintaining them on our own. We accept the rules and regulations, and anytime in the future, if we need to change those rules and regulations, we need to go back through the Mass Department of Transportation for those. So basically, the document that they send us is the rules and regulations for this project. They were adopted by the Traffic Commission in November, need to be approved by the city council in order for the funds to be released for the project. The project has been bid, there is a contractor, construction will start on or about April 1st of 2017.
Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't think of a better place to do some traffic improvements, having been stuck there many times trying to cut across. But what is actually going to happen as a result of the?
If you are on Island Pond Road, going to the north, the road will tee in better to Roosevelt Avenue with a traffic signal. Traffic signal will be coordinated with the traffic signal that's existing on Alden Street, so basically, in the morning, the way I drive into work as well, you get stuck there during peak times, having to look for vehicles on both sides to be able to go through. That will then be controlled by a traffic signal.
How about when you're coming down Island Pond that way?
If you're, that's where I'm talking about, Island Pond Road, you will tee into Roosevelt, there'll be a traffic signal, and if you're on Roosevelt, you'll basically operate the way that you are now. So basically, it will control the traffic a lot better.
Any differences going over the general edginess?
No, other than the traffic signals being coordinated.
Oh, that's, that's great improvement. Very happy to support.
You can still cut right through Overlook anytime you want.
Counsel Marcus Williams?
Hey, Chris, thank you, Mr. President. I am certainly happy. I'm certainly happy to hear about these improvements. I live right off of Alden Street, I also take this, that route to work. But I just had a quick question. How are these changes communicated to the neighbors to be affected or an intermediate area?
We had, during the course of the design, we had three or four neighborhood presentations. We have a 25% design presentation for mass DOT, and I think we were in front of the neighborhood council two or three times, so we had a number of presentations.
Is that the Upper Hill, or was it?
We did East Forest Park and we did Upper Hill together once, and we did them separately.
Now, Chris, I'm going to caution you, any taking of sideways, you're about to have an issue.
Any taking of?
Sidewalks.
No, no sidewalks are being, nothing's, sidewalks are actually being extended.
Oh, really?
Yeah, especially on the Pond side of Alden Street. Right now, there isn't any.
Okay.
So all sidewalks are getting redone or extended.
Oh, great.
Nobody's losing any.
All right, thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Bud Williams?
Counsel Marcus Williams' point, Mr. President, I would hope that Ward Seven Counselor and Ward Five Counselor, along with me, can have a meeting, because the folks on, you know, Island Pond and Arcadia and Overlook really don't have a, they have a clue, they haven't had any detail. So hopefully, we call a meeting on the lower end of Council, Ward Seven Counselor, on this end down by the bridge, you get the residents together and let them know, because a lot of folks are still asking me, and I'm delighted to say that, Chris.
Anytime you want to do it, happy to do it.
Okay, we'll do it. Thanks, Chris.
Counsel Allen?
If I could just respond to Counsel Bud Williams. I did not attend any meetings that Upper Hill was at. I did attend a meeting that East Forest Park was at, and that was a pretty complete meeting, last January or February, with the whole, there were about eighty people there, as I.
Yeah, that was the required mass DOT here, so it wasn't neighborhood specific, but...
And having been at East Forest Park Civic Association last Wednesday, this came up, they were talking about the agendas, Beth was talking about the agendas in the next few months, and you're going to get an invite?
Yep.
April, May, June, somewhere in there, to come and talk about the project.
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, maybe we could coordinate that, that if, your Upper Hill is the right civic association there. So let's talk about how we do that.
Mr. President, with that, appreciate the counsel, would you kind of, like, do it on site? Do it somewhere in the site, right in that, you can do it in that triangle right there, that park there, so people can visually see exactly what's going on. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on the agenda item number sixteen? Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please. Approving the agreement.
On approving the agreement, Counsel Hurst, absent. Counsel Shay?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs? Absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh? Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Agreement is approved. Item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen is an order granting a perpetual access easement across land at the South End Middle School to the Roman Catholic Bishop of Springfield.
Good evening.
The matter before you tonight is a request from the Diocese of Springfield to allow passage across a triangular shaped piece of the South End Middle School, the back of the school property. There's currently a garage there, where I think that things like snow blowers and equipment are housed, and the diocese would like to get that easement in order to build a driveway between its property on Margaret Street and its property on William Street, because each street is one-way. It's difficult to get back and forth so, without having to go out and around. So it's a very small portion, the school committee has reviewed this and approved it, and in return for granting the easement, if the council so decides, the diocese will actually demolish the garage, the school doesn't use it. They will come on the site, demolish the garage, clear it out, they're going to pave it, and they will maintain the driveway and take care of it. Mr. Shibley is here from the Colebrook on behalf of the diocese, if anyone has any technical questions, he'd be happy to answer them as well. So there's no money being changed hands for the easement, it's just really a very small corner, it won't impact any of the operations of the school or the students, and we're asking the council to look favorably upon it tonight.
Any questions from the council? Is there a contract requiring the diocese to do those things?
It's a condition of the easement, so it's consideration for the granting of the easement.
All right. Any questions from the council? All right. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
On granting the easement, Counsel Hurst, absent. Counsel Shay?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs? Absent. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams? Yes, Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Matter is approved. Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we take third step on item number?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, please. Counsel Ash?
Just quickly on that, on that item, is there, if there was a study done, what was the source of the funding for that study? Do we know?
For the, for the REO?
Actually, that was one of the questions that was of concern. The funding is, we have a verbal commitment, TJ is here, and he can speak on it from the city's point of view, but it's going to be, the money is going to be a contribution from the city, and we have the assurances of the mayor's representative, and TJ will speak on it, as I said, and the local unions collectively recognize the value of having the study to encase somebody at some point upon enforcement attempts to take us to court. And so if I would mind, I'd bow to TJ to explain in a little bit more detail.
Mr. Clerk, before we hear from TJ, could you call the item, please?
Item eighteen, an order amending chapter eighty-two, commonly known as the Responsible Employer's Ordinance.
TJ?
Thank you, Mr. President, to the council. Just want to make sure that the council brought up to speed on kind of where the administration is and where we are in terms of moving forward with the changes. We've met with the carpenters and the ironworkers to have a conversation about funding this study. It really led to a nice conversation about enforcement. I know that's been, the body's been looking for enforcement, whether it's through a commissioner or not, or whatever the, whatever it is. What we actually have decided, I presented to the REO committee, was that me, in my role as CFO, I have the Department of Capital Asset Construction and the Department of Procurement, both report to me that I would actually go on-site with the deputy procurement officer to all the meetings with the GC, the monthly meetings with the GC, to hold the GCs accountable, and to make sure that they're providing us with the data that we need in order to make informed decisions. There's also conversations around having it be cumulative, and making sure that as long as you're hitting your targets on a cumulative basis, that it makes a lot more sense, because when I went back and looked at some of these projects, the GCs did hit them. And now, we're going to have some more conversations at the REO about the impact of that and whether or not we want to go, you know, to that level, but we're ready to move forward with some serious enforcement. The sticky part of it is, it's not legally enforceable without this disparity study that we need to fund. And so we met with the folks from the ironworkers and from the carpenters, and really what the city's decided that we would come to the council for in January is to appropriate $20,000 for the study. The overall study is going to cost $25,000, and the unions will kick in the other $5,000. There were getting to be too many players involved in funding it, and we really wanted it just to kind of be more of a city-driven decision and showing the data, and so that's really where we're at in terms of moving forward with this ordinance. And then it does not, the ordinance will not take effect until the study is done. We've engaged, we're about to engage UMass Boston, who's going to do the study for us, and they're hoping to have it done by the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, to be effective for July 1st. That's the ultimate goal, so. That's the ultimate goal, so.
Great. Okay. Any other counselors? Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call is required to be ordained.
On amending the ordinance, Counselor Hurst, absent. Counselor Shea?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Twigs?
Absent.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Bud Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient, amendment is approved. Congratulations. Okay, item number 22, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 22 is an order referring all unfinished business from the 2016 legislative year to 2017.
Okay. All those in favor of the order, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, before we call item number 23, I just want to thank all my colleagues for the last three years trusting me to do this job. I hope you found that I tried to do it honestly, and look forward to serving with you guys in years to come. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Clerk, item number 23.
You're treating it as the end of the normal council agenda. Item number 23 is an informal caucus for the election of the president and vice president.
Counselor Gomez?
President Fenton, I want to take the time to just thank you for all the work you've done, all your due diligence. Teaching young council like myself some of the ins and outs, but at this time, I want to nominate for president from Ward 8, Orlando Ramos.
Okay. We're going to take nominations for president. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. We've received the nomination for Counselor Orlando Ramos, seconded by Counselor Rook. Are there any other nominations?
President, they want your nomination, quote unquote, Orlando Ramos.
Okay. Any objections? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, let's hear it.
On electing Counselor Ramos to the position of the city council president, Counselor Hurst, absent. Counselor Shea?
Yes.
Well, what we should, what we do is, you say the name of the?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
This is the informal?
Orlando Ramos.
Yeah.